Good evening. I would like to call the public hearing to order. Roll call show that all of council is in attendance. This is not necessarily, this is not a normal meeting of council. So there are going to be some slight differences in how we go about doing things tonight. So I'm going to read some notes that I've been given to make sure that we cover them all properly. So firstly, we are here to hear presentations related to the land use bylaw PLU one dash twenty-five, with an opportunity for the public to provide their comments to council on this proposed bylaw. This is a formal hearing. It is not a forum for debate or question and answer period. But there's definitely going to be opportunity for you guys to state your preference, whether you're in favor or against it, and get some validation or clarification questions out if you need to. Anyone that wishes to speak, you must pre-register. By the time I start the actual presentation, if you have not signed this paper, you will not have the opportunity to speak tonight. Okay? So last call, anybody that has not signed this that wishes to. All right. There's a couple other points, but I'll actually read the sections as we get to them. So the next step in here is to have planning and development. Please confirm that the public hearing was advertised in accordance with legislation and to summarize the purpose of the public hearing.
The public hearing is...
Microphone.
This public hearing is being held for land use bylaw one dash twenty-five. The public hearing was advertised. We did contact the Morenville Free Press. They no longer serve our community. We do not have a newspaper that serves our community. Therefore, it was advertised by poster on the community bulletin board in front of the post office in the town hall lobby. It was also posted on the electronic sign out in front of the cultural center. It was also posted on our Facebook and our website.
Thank you. All right, so next, if we could turn it over to you guys and let you do your presentation to us on the land use bylaw.
Thank you. So the purpose of the public hearing in large part is to hear testimony from the community. So we'll keep our presentation short and sweet. So you don't have to listen to me for too long. And I'd just like to provide an overview of the background of the project, work that was undertaken, the public engagement that was undertaken as part of the project, and then go through some of those other legislative requirements so you can see that the boxes were checked. So this bylaw was, is a bylaw to modernize and review the existing land use bylaw of the Town of Gibbons. It began in the spring of 2024. The purpose of the review is to update the land use bylaw to ensure consistency with current provincial legislative requirements, to reflect the goals and priorities in the town's municipal development plan, which is a newer document, and to enable and make sure that the town is development ready for a wide range of future residential and other economic development opportunities. So the town at the beginning of the project identified the following primary objectives: to reduce red tape where possible and improve transparency and efficiency. This project aimed to reduce the number of land use districts in the bylaw. There was a lot of, you had a big bylaw. There was a lot going on there. And I think that that had happened as a result of different development opportunities over time. But there were opportunities identified to try and consolidate some of those districts and simplify the bylaw. So that was one of the things that was looked at as part of the review. We also looked at identifying and making a little bit more transparent for people, entertaining development within the community, what the application requirements would be at time of development. So it was a little bit clearer. And then with the hopes that it would also be more consistently applied. So everybody would know what the requirements were. You could point to the bylaw and there was more consistency in the administrative process related to those sorts of things. And then we want to make sure that those application requirements supported the types of development that the town wished to entertain in the future. The last part of that revision related to this area was to clarify the timelines and processes related to development and subdivision applications. So there were some changes to the municipal government act that made changes to the timelines, the legislative timelines, related to the subdivision and development process. And so that needed to be updated in the land use bylaw to ensure your document was consistent with what the legislative requirements are in the MGA. So there wasn't a conflict. The next one was to ensure consistency with changes to the provincial legislation. So there's an overlap here. Bill twenty-one and bill thirty-eight amended the municipal government act and made substantive changes to some of the administrative processes that govern subdivision and development. So we wanted to update the document to correct the information about the appeal process, to identify and correct the development requirements, especially in relation to development when it's proposed adjacent to wetlands, water bodies, and historic resources. So some of those things have just shifted over time. And it was unclear in the land use bylaw what would be required to be provided if you were proposing a development that was affected by those types of characteristics. The last one was to identify the town's current boundaries and statutory plan areas. So after your annexation, there was an amendment to the land use bylaw. You'd had a number of amendments to the land use bylaw. And one of the goals of this project or objectives of this project was to bring all of those amendments into one document. So you could see what was actually approved. Because there'd been so many amendments, including the annexation, it was almost a Frankenstein land use bylaw, right? And it was really difficult to use and understand what was going on. So in repealing that bylaw and replacing it with a new one, all of it is brought into a nice clean document, which would make it a lot easier to figure out what is intended and what is approved and what isn't approved. That was a challenge. So in terms of public engagement, on Wednesday, February fifth, there was an online engagement session held for community members. It was a Zoom meeting. We had approximately eight people in attendance. And then because that number was low, there was a recording of that session that was held and posted on the town's website. That recording was viewed independently thirty-five times. So we got a little bit more uptake with the recording. And then additionally, the town held an open house in person on February eighth at the Gibbons Cultural Center. There was approximately an additional thirteen people who attended. Information displays were printed as handouts, and they were also made available at the town office after the meeting so that if anyone couldn't attend the meeting, that information was still available for them, for their review. Following the online and in-person engagement sessions, a what we heard report was prepared and submitted to town administration to present to council. The report identified feedback received at the engagement sessions and included some recommended changes based on the feedback that was provided from community members. So two specific ones that we point out is there was a mapping error that was identified by a community member. So we presented that to council and revised the maps accordingly with council's direction to address that mapping error. And then the town, sort of in between then and now, has approved a new authorities bylaw that creates a municipal planning commission. Is that correct? Yes. So the land use bylaw needed to be updated to reflect that change to how development permits are approved within the municipality as a result of that bylaw. So in terms of agency notification, and in accordance with section six three-six of the municipal government act, the following agencies and organizations were sent a referral letter and invited to provide feedback: Alberta Forestry and Parks, Alberta Environment, the Alberta Energy Regulator, Alberta Health Services, Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors, Alberta Art, Culture and the Status of Women, Canada Post, North Parkland REA, Fortis, Telus, Atco Gas and Pipelines, Sturgeon School Division, CN Rail and Sturgeon County. We did receive comments back from Telus, who indicated they had no concerns. And we received comments back from CN Rail. And I have to talk about that a little bit. They came in late. But they did provide us with some feedback and some recommended revisions to the land use bylaw to address development proposals that are adjacent to rail lines. And so one of the things I wanted to present during the public hearing for council's consideration and to everybody in attendance, because this is new information, is the recommended amendment to the first red bylaw to incorporate some of those changes. So I'll take a moment to go through that. There is a Schedule A to our report that it does, council, you have that in your packages? Does council have much? Yeah, okay. So I'm just going to take us through the Schedule A so that I can enter this into the record of the hearing for everybody who doesn't have a written copy of it. So CN requested that we insert a new definition for rail facilities in the land use bylaw. And so the definition they proposed is rail facility means a rail corridor, rail sightings, train stations, intermodal facilities, rail yards, and associated uses, including designated lands for future rail facilities. They also recommended industrial development permit application requirements. That's separate, isn't it?
Rail facilities was added to it.
Oh, rail facilities was added to it. Thank you, Brad. So in the five point six, they recommended that we replace five, six, one so that it reads any accessory works required, pipeline, rail facilities, power lines, et cetera. So just to include rail facilities. They did a pretty thorough job of reading the land use bylaw. I'm really impressed. And then in the, they were recommending deleting the pipeline setback section, which is nine eighteen-two. In, you already had a section in your land use bylaw that deals with railway and development near rail lines. And so they looked at that in more detail. And they provided a couple of recommendations. We reviewed their recommendations in relation to what you already had in your land use bylaw, specifically in regards to the development setbacks that were in those provisions. And note that the development setbacks that you had identified in your existing land use bylaw, which have been carried forward into this draft, are consistent with the FCM RAC guidelines already. So those didn't need to be adjusted. You're, they're consistent. For the most part, what they were looking at or have requested that you include in your land use bylaw would be additional information requirements to deal with like noise and vibration. So the nine twenty-three sub-two, the change that's suggested there is really just a wording change to the end of that provision. So right now, the provision reads all dwellings must be located a minimum of thirty meters from the boundary of a railway right-of-way or as determined by the development authority. That's the same. There's no change there. The end just says reduced setbacks can be considered. And you had that before. It just provides a little bit more information about what the triggers would be for considering that. So they can be considered in certain circumstances, dependent on the proposed use and in conjunction with additional studies and alternate safety measures to the satisfaction of the town in consultation with the railway operator. So it felt like that was a reasonable, a reasonable change. Then the next ones are new. So nine twenty-three-five would be new. It states that all proposed residential developments or other sensitive uses located within seventy-five meters of a rail right-of-way may, so it's a may statement rather than a shall statement. So it depends on what's being proposed and where. May be required to undertake vibration studies to the satisfaction of the development authority in consultation with the railway operator, and shall undertake to implement the appropriate measures to mitigate any adverse effects from vibration that were identified in the report. So that seems like a reasonable thing to be able to ask, to facilitate being able to ask in circumstances where it's deemed appropriate. The next one is nine twenty-three-six. All proposed residential developments or other sensitive uses located adjacent to railways may be required to implement appropriate mitigation measures, not limited to safety setbacks, berms, crash barriers, and security fencing in accordance with FCM and RAC guidelines. Nine twenty-three-seven, it's all proposed residential developments or other sensitive uses located adjacent to railways shall implement the applicable warning clauses provided by the appropriate railway operator. That one maybe should be a, may be required rather than a shall? Because sometimes they're, they're a little bit, a lot. So just something for council's consideration. Nine twenty-three-eight, all proposed residential developments or other sensitive uses located adjacent to railways shall implement, secure, and maintain any required rail noise, vibration, and safety impact mitigation measures, along with any required notices on title, such as development agreements, warning clauses, or other environmental easements through appropriate legal mechanisms to the satisfaction of the town. So that, that's a new one that they've been, they've been asking us to include for the last couple of years. And essentially, it would just be a restrictive covenant or within the development agreement that said, hey, you are adjacent to a rail line. These are things that you can expect. And then it's there, right? It's, you've disclosed. And for any future buyer, it stays on the title. And it's a disclosure statement. So it is what it is. You're, you have a building or you're occupying a building adjacent to a rail line. And then the last one is all proposed residential developments or other sensitive uses located in proximity to rail facilities shall evaluate, prioritize, and secure grade separation of railways and major roads in cooperation with Transport Canada and the appropriate railway operator. So we've included these recommendations, the ones that we thought were reasonable, in an amending motion for council's consideration. And I wanted to read that in for the record so that you have that information available to you. And should council decide that they're appropriate to include these things, then prior to giving consideration of second and third reading of the bylaw, we'd ask that you consider a motion to amend the bylaw as per this amending motion, and then proceed with second and third reading as amended. Okay? So the last one that I wanted to flag for you was, was that amendment that we talked about to the map that came up at the public open house. We've included that in the amending motion as well. So those are the, the, oh.
Can I, are we allowed to ask questions while you're chatting?
Yes, you can.
Okay. What, can you just explain what the last, I just wasn't quite, quite clear. The mapping of the town was wrong?
Yeah, there, there was a little, there was a spot. I wonder what the best way to describe that is. There was, it was municipally owned land that was not identified as park. Is that correct? Like it was, it was this one over here.
Can you, can you point?
How do I, how do I point that out in a way that everyone can know what I'm talking about?
It was a lot located north of the cemetery.
North of the cemetery?
On fifty-first.
On the west side of fifty-first?
Yes.
It was. It was yellow and it went green, right? The lines were just wrong. It was, the lines were just wrong.
We were looking at this lot going to M.R.
Is it the green one?
This lot was...
Did that one get corrected already? So is it this one we're talking about?
I'm not sure. The one you're talking was the one that come up to public hearing?
It's right here.
Right there.
Right there.
Over a little.
There.
Yes, that was the one you pointed out at the public open house. So there'd been a redesignation bylaw. It was an amended, one of the, one of fifty-nine, an amended bylaw to the original land use bylaw. It was missed in mapping. So we've corrected the mapping to reflect the appropriate zoning board. We didn't change it, but it's...
Where are you pointing to exactly, Susan?
About there. So from there north, sorry, from there north is, is municipal land kind of considered a park?
Is it, is it memorial, memorial park? Is that what?
No, that would be farther south.
North of the park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All the ones that all say public land or private land, okay.
Thank you, Susan. So did that help?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So the last bit I wanted to go over, just a little bit of a rehash, I guess. So we normally will just read in information about the public notification and advertising. The public hearing was advertised through the town's website. And the dates are in the reports. We have this for the record. The cultural center electronic board had signed, the community bulletin board in the post office, the bulletin board in the town office, and the Gibbons Facebook page. The notification and advertising requirements for a public hearing, in our opinion, regarding municipal development, or excuse me, land use bylaw review as identified in the municipal government act have been satisfied. So you have met those legislative requirements. And it is a little bit tricky for you with the absence of a paper that circulates within your community. So the, the recommendation from your planners is that with the public hearing being held today, the notification and public consultation requirements stated in the act have been satisfied. In some regards, you went above and beyond with your use of different social media to ensure that the community knew about this project throughout the project. I especially liked the pop-ups. So as soon as you go onto the Town of Gibbons website, it popped up that this was going on. So it was very difficult to ignore. Fantastic. So our recommendation is that following the conclusion of the public hearing, depending on the testimony that's received today, council, at your next opportunity, give consideration to second and third readings of the bylaw with the amendments that we read into the record. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Council, does anybody else have any questions? Counselor Saddle?
Yeah, I was just curious as to what CN determines to be a sensitive area, or, no.
It, it would essentially be things like health facilities, schools, places where people congregate. There, there is a definition that I'll try and pull up here if we can get back onto the conversation. But, but they, they do define what a sensitive land use is. Essentially, it's non-commercial, non-industrial developments and not including residential as well, but places where children, members of the public might gather. And, and, sorry, it also includes park space and playgrounds and things, things of that nature.
All right. Any other questions?
Yep.
Counselor Harris?
Thank you. I think it's in here. The rate of entry is in, is in, is in this document, right?
Are you talking about in the enforcement section?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Can you just explain that? I had a couple of people asking about that because it seems a little bit overreaching.
So that's, your, your entire enforcement section is enabled and, and spelled out actually for all municipalities in the municipal government act. So there's nothing in this section that exceeds or is different than what the enforcement steps and enforcement powers are enabled for all municipalities in the province of Alberta through the municipal government act. So the right of entry piece there, it's just, it's from the legislation. If you didn't include it in your land use bylaw, it would still be the case that this is how enforcement action is taken when you have to deal with a situation where a development occurs on a property or a use of land on a property occurs that's inconsistent with the land use bylaw. It, it really is very specific to the land use bylaw. It wouldn't apply in any other sorts of situations. And that enabling of a right to enter, of right to enter a property to enforce the land use bylaw is, is just for this. So it's not like Health Act or any of those other things. Those are different things. It's just, you, you have to come, be able to come onto the property to provide evidence or to collect the evidence in order to be able to undertake the enforcement. Or you can't successfully undertake the enforcement action. As a municipality, you need pictures. So that, that's what it is, right?
And that's standard?
In all, in all municipalities, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Are we doing first reading tonight? We're not doing?
We've already done first reading.
Yeah, no, no, no. Second and third, pardon me.
No, and no, we're not doing that tonight. No, no, basically, no decisions are being made tonight. At the very end of it, we'll go into kind of a closed session for us to discuss a little bit. But then, yeah, it'll be brought up again. Is it part of the agenda for our next meeting?
So it's not a closed session. I just want to clarify that because there are no decisions being made here tonight. So it's not a closed session. When the hearing is closed, the public leaves. It allows you to have your discussion. As far as when it's going on the next, it's not on the next agenda, I believe. May seventeenth agenda will be, it'll be coming forward for a second and possible third reading at that time.
Thank you. Counselor Mont?
I just want to reserve my, my comments for last. When it comes to the municipal governance act or municipal government act, I know about MGA orders, all of those different pieces. Can you kind of elaborate a little bit more on the MGA piece or the section that this applies to, just to help our public understand a little bit more? As, as opposed to just referring to it? Maybe just identifying that particular section and description? Not in its entirety, but just maybe just an overview?
Yes, it may take me a moment to find the section. Is, is that all right?
Perfectly okay, but I think it's important for the public to know that.
Brad's just going to pull up the MGA right now.
As, as a note, the right of entry was in the previous land use bylaw as well.
Written like that, Susan?
The wording has been elaborated, expanded so that it's clearer. But yes, pretty much, it was basically the same. It's just we've tried to clarify the wording so people understand better. In reality, I've never ever used it.
Well, yeah, that's, it's just... Okay.
So the section of the municipal government act that applies in this situation, it's division four enforcement of municipal law, section five four two. If this or any other enactment or bylaw authorizes or requires anything to be inspected, remedied, enforced, or done by municipality, a designated officer of the municipality may, after giving reasonable notice to the owner or occupier of the land or the structure to be entered to carry out an inspection, remedy, enforcement, or action, enter on that land or structure at any reasonable time and carry out the inspection, enforcement, or action authorized or required by enforcement or bylaw. So five four two is the section you're looking for. So what, what your bylaw does is it just tries to define what reasonable notice is. So it takes it a little bit further just to make it clearer for people what the expectation would be.
So any adjustments there for clarification as opposed, because we can't contradict?
It, it's not enabling or providing the municipality with powers that you don't have, that the power is already established by the municipal government act. Yeah. So, and that's the same for all municipalities in the province.
Thank you.
Does that, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, it just helps with referencing. And I think it's important for our public to know that, especially if they're not familiar with the MGA. I've, I'm familiar with orders and pieces like that. But again, when it comes to this, it, it's, it's good to refer back to it. So thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, then, next step, written submissions. Acting CAO, have you received any written correspondence related to the land use bylaw?
Deputy Mayor, you said, and there has been no written submissions into the town.
Thank you. All right. Public, it is your turn. Reminder, if you had not signed in on this, I will not be calling you and you will not have an opportunity to speak tonight. For those of you that have signed, thank you. Just to be clear, when I do call your name, and I'm just going to call them in order, I do require you to come up to the microphone. Make sure the blue light is on so that we can all hear you online. I need you to state your full name, your street address, and the interest in the matter, as well as whether you're in favor or against the current as presented land use bylaw. Generally speaking, what I would probably do is give you the opportunity to ask two questions along with a comment if you needed to. If you have more, I'm going to let everybody else go through the line first to make sure we have time for everybody. And then if there's time at the end and you still have more questions, then please feel free to come back up and let me know. So I think that is it. All right. And also, council, please feel free to ask questions of the presenter as they come up. So the first individual, Ray Hajar? Please feel free to come on up to the mic.
My name is Ray Hajar. We own the property west of the tracks to the river by the fish pond. Okay? And there's one house on one acre of land in the very center. So what we, what we're proposing is to put in, not including that one acre, not including that one acre, thirty-six lots. that one acre, thirty-six lots for single-family or duplex. So there's, I think, twenty-nine or thirty single-family, the rest are duplex lots. Now, when I say duplex, that's two houses, one lot, but that's still one lot. We'll have split titles, we'll have an extra service. My question is regarding the property just adjacent to the tracks. So there's a road that divides that property in half. One is adjacent to the tracks, which is from, what street is this?
Fifty-seventh.
From Fiftyth Avenue to Fifty-second Avenue, along the tracks. And the other parcel, the residential parcel, is across the street from the fish pond over to Fifty-second Avenue. I don't think I have it clear on what CN is really asking for. Because I talked to CN last Thursday. They happened to be here doing some work, because apparently they dumped all those ties in the wrong spot, had to clear it up. So I just got lucky that somebody was there. Now CN has a speed limit on trains that come through town, which is forty kilometers hour or twenty-five miles, uh, forty kilometers per hour or twenty-five miles an hour. When they go through town. Apparently, they come through town sometimes twice or three times a day. Sometimes they don't come for days. Apparently. I'm not here watching them. You guys, you people would know more. I understand that trains have, make, create vibrations in the soil. From a builder's point of view, an engineering point of view, all that can be mitigated was with certain building features that would eliminate that. And that's a dampening barrier between the foundation and the earth, the dirt. When it comes to above ground, same, the same principle applies. So instead of using a hard material like stone or brick, we, we would use things like a styrofoam layer on the outside of the building, and then you apply acrylic stucco, which absorbs sound. It baffles it actually, because it moves. No different than soundproofing in walls. Okay? The problem, I think, is the setback is too far on the commercial site. I, there's not a problem with the residential site, because we're far away. Now, I know that, I'm sure all of us have driven down Highway Two to Calgary, and you see those cables installed on the side of the highway to prevent vehicles from going into the ditch and crossing over to the oncoming traffic. Those are four thousand pound vehicles by and large, eighty percent of them, other than the big trucks. That'll prevent a vehicle from perhaps going too fast into the ditch or crossing the way, but they still break through it. Now we're talking about a hundred-ton train. I don't care if you've got a sixteen-foot concrete wall. Now, if you all know, there's three sets of, three sets of tracks there. So when I talked to the gentleman over at that site, he said, the most easterly track is only active one. The other two are used to park train cars, or referred to by them as siding. So there's no active movement. So they use that to store cars for when the plant needs, and they just shuffle it back and forth, shuttle it back and forth. So it doesn't, it says thirty meters, but it doesn't say thirty meters from where? Or they're suggesting thirty meters. So is that from the active track? Or is that from the siding?
So for commercial and industrial development, the setback is fifteen meters from the nearest part of said development and the boundary of the railway right-of-way?
Fifteen meters.
For commercial and industrial, thirty for residential.
Okay.
You can put garages on the, in the fifteen, you can put, there's a lot of things you can put. I'm going through the same thing.
No, no. But it's, we can use it for parking.
Yep.
Vehicles.
That, we have in the past been able to negotiate that, yeah.
Yeah, but it seems to me that CN has the veto on any development that goes in there.
No, they don't. So they can provide recommendations.
Recommendations. Emphasis recommendations.
Yeah. Yeah, and then it's up to the municipality, you know, collaborating with the developer, and working with the developer and with CN to determine what the appropriate, if there needs to be a compromise, measures would be to enable the, the safety standards to continue to be met. So that's what the town's done in the past.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of that is based on the wording of the land use bylaw, whether we say shall or may, as to how it's enforced.
Okay. Another question. It's asking for a barrier.
Yes.
Seeing that the active track is the furthest from the development, because it's on the west, on the east side of the, it's the most easterly track. The two westerly, the other two tracks are just sidings for parking. So I mean, if a train's hooking up to a car, or a series of cars, how fast can it be going? Not very fast. So does that affect a, a barrier? Like, I, I can see a barrier on a side that's active. I just, it doesn't make any sense to have a barrier on a side that's not active.
Sean, are you on, you're on the inactive side of the, right?
I don't know. I'm not gonna say this, but it can be negotiated out. You just gotta go meet with them.
Which I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
Because two of my ex-brothers are vice presidents for CN.
You should be talking to them.
So, one more question, and that'll be done. Thank you very much. We're, we would like to put up a, a lower-level commercial and residential above that. Does that affect anything? Because it's, it's not single-family. I'm talking apartment.
Yeah, so the, the recommendation is thirty meters for that, so you would have to be able to demonstrate that you, you, the types of construction methods that you were mentioning, that they would be incorporated into, and then have a conversation with CN, because that's a bit close.
So Chris, uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Because I'm built, I just finished a house that's solid concrete, right from the footings, all the way to the rafters. You've never been in a house that quiet in your life. And it's bulletproof. Twenty-seven-hundred square foot main floor, twenty-seven-hundred square foot basement, and twelve-hundred square foot five-car garage. The heating bill's three hundred dollars a month in January. So I'm familiar with the, with the, the business of efficiency and lowering the, the noise levels and, and vibrations in houses. Because what it is, is three or four inches of styrofoam on the outside. Now, any good home builder will, if you've ever been to a standard house, today, if you don't put styrofoam on your house, you're not a very good builder. Because that styrofoam absorbs sound and vibration. It's not transferred into the concrete. Well, we've done that there, and we put it on the inside also. So we use, it's sandwiched. Okay? Okay? So I just want to be clear that we'd like to put up a small apartment building, because there's a need for it in this town. Right? So that is something that's very important to us. We've been waiting, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen years to get rolling, and now there's a demand. And there's a demand for lots. The lot issue is obviously not a problem for CN. Our concern is the multi-use building. Thank you.
All right. So I do have one follow-up question, just in, one of the requirements is to ask, are you in favor or against the current as proposed?
I, I'd like to see it amended, thank you.
Okay.
And the setbacks are what, you'd like to see amended?
I'd like to s, see, I think commercial, that includes apartments.
The commercial includes apartments?
No, that would be part of the, I would assume.
Because, because the, the apartments above the commercial are technically residential now?
Yeah, but it's, it's not like, it is, it is, but it's a rental unit. It's not like somebody's buying a house and putting it there. People come and go. And I understand you have to also be cognit of the safety factors. I'm not arguing that part at all. I'm just thinking that if it's gonna be there, it'd be nice to have only a fifteen-meter setback. Same as the commercial.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Dean Remier?
Remer? I've got no concerns or questions at this time, but I appreciate that time coming down here.
All right. Thank you very much. Darren Longstaff?
Sorry, I have no questions at this time, thanks.
All right. With that, then. Done that, done that. All right. Well, for those that did speak, thank you very much for coming and asking your questions and, and just getting, making sure that we are aware of your concerns. For everybody else that has come, thank you very much for coming. So I'll now state that this public hearing is closed. And if council wants to stick around for the end, we can finish off a little discussion.